We'll know how to get in touch with us.
Yes. Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
And Commissioner Dawson is absent. Staff present today are Planning Manager Hill, Principal Planner Sabdo, and Recording Secretary Argenbrite. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isarchmonterey.org. Remote commentators will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating, your city government.
Thanks, Spencer. So it looks like we only, on the consent agenda, we just have the minutes from November 28th and January 20, January 14th. Any questions on them or comments? Nope. Anybody in the audience have any comments or questions on the consent agenda, which are the minutes?
I've never given one, so I'm waiting one more person if that's okay.
I'm sure. Well, if you're here for one of the public appearance items, there's this one, then this has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Great, all right.
And there are no attendees online with their hands raised as well.
Great. So why don't we break this up and do it as two votes? Because Sandy wasn't here for one, and I did watch the November 28th meeting on YouTube. So Spencer, could you, or can we have a motion for the November 26th?
No, no mode.
I'll second.
Okay. Could you please do a roll call for that, Spencer?
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Chair Bluth.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
That motion is carried, and it's not appealed. No, all right.
Yeah. Okay, why don't we do the next one, which is January 14th? Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
In a second.
Hold on a second.
Okay. Again, Spencer, could you do another roll call for?
Yes, of course. Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Abstain.
Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Fantastic. Okay, so is there anybody in the audience that has any comments or issues that are not on the agenda that they'd like to make? Anybody online, Spencer?
There is one attendee with their hand raised. Our last three numbers, 902. I will unmute you. You can, you are allowed to speak.
Good evening. This is Nina Beatty. I wanted to speak on the issue of battery storage. We have now had a horrific fire in Moss Landing, and there has been a push over recent years to permit battery storage for electric vehicles and solar arrays into garages of homes, as well as have these large facilities in communities. And many communities are getting pressured with whatever incentives they are being offered to have these in their communities. And this is, in addition to the danger anyway from these batteries, is also the issue that Monterey is a high-fire hazard zone in many parts of it. These meters or these batteries, there have been four incidents at the Moss Landing plant. At least two of them have been visible fires. One other incident may have been a fire. When the county approved both phases or all phases of both projects, this is a Vista Energy and then PG&E Tesla, there was no environmental impact report done for these projects, for these phases. Instead, there was a mitigated negative declaration, and the construction activities were the main focus of any negative effects that they said could be mitigated. So without review, without, with ignoring the known hazards, and many hazards were known at that time, saying no significant environmental impacts was abject. I mean, I can't even, there are no words for what that was when there was, it was adequately known that these batteries posed a problem. And they're so toxic when they're burned. They're very, they're explosively flammable to air, heat, and water. And they are vulnerable to thermal runaway, which is what happened in this case. And unfortunately, the manufacturing defects that are in these batteries can't be detected. This is from the industry. The industry is saying that there are manufacturing defects that show up in these batteries. They can't detect them. So you're basically displaying a very dangerous game of roulette when you install these, these storage facilities in a community or in a garage. And I can't even imagine what would happen if one of these blew up in a house in our neighborhoods. The toxicity, as you know from the news, San Jose State University researchers have now found a surge in heavy metals in the soils within a two-mile radius of the plant. And I think that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we're finding. And also, the Marina landfill is refusing anything coming from Prundale. So that tells you that the Board of Supervisors, at this point, there was no update on the situation at the county in the meeting today. Santa Cruz County did have an update, but not Monterey County. So.
I guess you ran out of time, but thanks for your comment. Certainly Jermaine for what's going on in the last few weeks. So we'll move on to, Spencer, anybody else online?
There are no other attendees with their hands raised online.
All right. So let's move on to the consentage or the public hearing item. Consider 548 Mar Vista Drive variance permit application VA 240240 for a driveway variance application. Norca Law Office, property owner's Albert Dels. Christie, do you have a presentation?
I do. I was trying to hide this. Thank you, Chair Bluth and planning commissioners. My name is Christie Sabdo, Principal Planner with the City of Monterey. I'll be presenting 548 Mar Vista Drive. It's a variance permit application for a driveway variance. Sorry, I should have changed that to planning commissioner, planning commission meeting. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission deny the variance for the driveway variance and at 548 Mar Vista Drive. The property is zoned R1. It has a general plan designation of low-density residential, and it's in the Monterey Vista neighborhood. The site is approximately 16,000 square feet with a one-story, single-family residence. As background, the property owner received a letter from the Code Compliance Division based on an inspection of the property in June. The letter indicated that the property needed to remove the driveway that is closer than three feet from the property line and noted the city code section. So the following parking and driveway standards apply to properties in the R1 district. Parking should be kept to a minimum in front yard setbacks. I'm going to skip over to the second one here that is applicable. The driveway and the front yard setback area shall not be widened more than an additional 10 feet and shall not be closer than three feet to a side property line. This widened area shall be a paved surface like the existing driveway alternative parking surface, paving surfaces, which have been reviewed and approved by staff. The three-foot area between the driveway apron and the side property line shall be landscaped and not paved. On all residential parcels, no more than 50% of the front yard shall be paved. An additional improved parking area may be considered by the zoning administrator while there, where there is a physical hardship based on lack of on-street parking, topography, or natural features. There shall be no parking in the front yard setback on non-driveway areas. So you'll see that in 2021, there was this three-foot area. It was landscaped. And then when the new pavers were installed, that landscaping area was removed. And here is a current picture of the property, also showing that landscape area no longer there. The staff did review, and no more than 50% of the front yard area is paved, but that three-foot landscape area was removed. Michael Edridge with Nikora Law Offices submitted a variance application to the planning division, requesting a variance to allow the existing driveway improvements at 548 Mar Vista to remain. The applicant indicates the driveway modifications would allow safer and more convenient access to and from the driveway to the public street, eliminate the planter box that during the rainy season would dislodge mud on the driveway toward the house. I'm just, I'm going to go through the variance findings. I did attach the letter from the applicant. So variance finding one is that because of special circumstances or conditions applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. So this finding is not met. The subject property is one of the largest lots on Mar Vista Drive between Toda Vista and Villa Gayuba. You see the topography here of the lots along Mar Vista Drive are similar with steep slopes at the rear of the lot and an approximate four-foot elevation change or less from the street to the end of the driveway. The subject property slopes, four feet in elevation along the driveway, approximately 462 feet in elevation at the property line to 458 feet in elevation along the driveway near the house. There's nothing special about the property's location or surroundings that would make it unique to other properties under the same zoning classification. The lot is not unique in size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. Therefore, there is no special circumstance or condition applicable to the subject property. Strict application of the Monterey City Code would not deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classification. Finding two is that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety, or general welfare. This finding can be met. Granting the application as proposed, maintaining the driveway improvements would not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Finding three is that the grant, that granting that application is consistent with the purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. This finding is not met. Granting the variance request would not be consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and that the property development standards that apply to R1 zone properties would not be enforced. Monterey City Code, Section 3823d5b, states the three-foot area between the driveway apron and the side property line shall be landscaped and not paved. This three-foot area used to be landscaped and was removed with the latest driveway modifications. Granting this variance application would constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. So staff is recommending with this denial of special condition one, that the property owner remove pavers within a three-foot area between the driveway and the side property line and be re-landscaped, consistent with the Monterey City Code. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny variance application VA 240240, requesting a driveway variance at 548 Mar Vista Drive with a special condition of approval to replace the three-foot area. We do have the applicant here today that is available for any questions, and staff is also available for any questions.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Christie? Peter?
Thank you, Christie, for your report. I'm just curious as to what the history was for how the city discovered this violation? That you mentioned there was a code compliance issue that, and somebody inspected the property and?
Sure. Sorry, I was trying to get the. Thank you. I'm actually not sure if a call came in or if it was just, you know, a drive-by noticing. I didn't ask the background from the city co-compliance officer, but typically it's somebody calling in.
Yeah, I'll just note that our code enforcement division operates on a complaint basis. So it's pretty rare for them to proactively seek out violations. They're quite busy.
Somebody in a corner driving around just looking for problems.
Unfortunately, we just don't have the staffing for that. But yeah, so, but along that same vein, as complaints come in, they are anonymous complaints, and they are allowed to remain anonymous.
Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that.
Of course.
Mike?
On that issue. I was driving through that neighborhood today, and I found at least one other property had a similar issue. Does, do they come sequentially? Do they look around the neighborhood when they find one violation to see if there's others?
It's not typical. So typically, they're responding to the property in which a complaint has been received. There's possibilities of, I'm sure there's a number of driveways throughout the city that are non-conforming and probably existed in a fashion that doesn't comply with that code section that existed prior to that code section. So, but it's my understanding that when code enforcement responds to complaints and investigates whether or not there's a code violation present, I do not believe it's their practice to canvass the surrounding area.
Second question is, if that material was to be removed and put in with crushed rock, replacing it, would that abide by the code?
That would not qualify as landscaping. No, sir.
Thank you.
Sandy?
This is like two weeks in a row that a surprising thing has come to the planning commission. I, the, did the people not apply for a driveway permit? I mean.
Yeah, a driveway permit wasn't required because they didn't. Well, for one, this isn't in a design review area, so an architectural review permit wasn't required. An encroachment permit is only required if you're altering the apron, the driveway apron. So in this case, it's similar to a fence. Like when you install a fence, you don't need to get a permit, but you do need to comply with the height requirements, similar here with the driveway. And a lot of people do call in and ask if there are any requirements because they're getting ready to make changes to their driveway.
Yeah. This is one of those items that, as Christie mentioned, the city has standards for development, but doesn't necessarily require a permit for. So there's a number of items that are kind of fall into that bucket, like fences and driveways and landscaping that don't necessarily require a building permit, but there are standards for development that exist.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Christie. Can you put this page up with the photograph? It has like a date stamp up in the left corner.
Yes, is that from the applicant?
Yeah. Well, I think this is from the report.
This is the code enforcement.
Sorry? Okay. Okay.
Great. So my question is about the access to what appears to be a gate along the left side there. So I assume that because this code reference that's listed right below that on, you know, in the text below that photograph in the, in the gender package, it's, it's all about the driveway being in that three-foot side. So I assume they would be allowed, if, if this application is denied, they would still be allowed to have a little access there to that gate. So that they would be allowed to have sort of a landing and a, you know, it's obviously not part of the driveway. It's more like a pathway at that point.
And a drain.
Yeah, it looks like there's an area drain there, too. So they wouldn't be expected to bring that, that little retaining wall all the way to the, to the building. They could sort of jog it around and still maintain access there.
Yeah, so this, the three feet that's required is just within the front yard setback area.
Okay.
Yeah, so once you get to that house, if you see the plane of that wall, yeah, you're, you're going to be outside of that front yard setback. But I think the simple answer to your question, Commissioner Latassa, is yes, they would be allowed a landing or a walkway to that gate. It's just that the driveway itself could not be widened to that property line.
Okay, so just to finish this off, then the front setback here is 20 feet?
It's 15 feet.
15 feet?
Yeah.
So 15 feet from the property line back, then they're able to jog over at 15 feet and, and maintain that existing middle retaining wall? Okay, thanks.
Dan, do you have a question?
Oh, actually, that answered it.
Oh, great.
Well, wait, excuse me. Proceed. Can you point on that image there? Where you, where the 15-foot setback looks like it would be?
I don't have it dimensioned. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does the driveway pavers go all the way to the property line near the street?
I can pull up our GIS, that's helpful. But I believe it does. Do I need to share this or can? I think it's.
Yeah, you can stop share, Christie, for this portion.
Oh, stop sharing?
Yeah, and click the red.
And so this is, it's still showing the, when the landscaping was there on this GIS. Oops. So I don't know, maybe the applicant can answer that question.
15 feet would be about where that alcove and the brushes.
What's the question?
It's a little bit behind that, this autumn.
Yeah, 15 feet is about here.
Okay, that certainly does it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Christie? I'm assuming you're going to be speaking for the applicant?
I'm Michael Edridge, and I represent the applicant, Desiree Albert, who is seated right here behind me.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I have a few photographs that I have for most of the members, or I think for all the members. Is that something I could pass out now or?
I think Christie has a device up there that can project them onto the screen.
Okay, I stapled them, and they're multiple ones, so somebody would have to go through them.
We can just distribute those to the commissioners.
And I do have them labeled, so at least there's page numbers to find out where's Waldo.
Do we need to have one for the public?
Yes, we'll need to keep one on file. Should have been provided in advance.
Thank you.
So. Yeah.
I need to share.
A little bit, Desiree Albert has lived at the property for almost 30 years. And when she put in the pavers, she also was proactively and got a new sewer line under there. So she was doing her due diligence to put in something aesthetic and to put in a new sewer line. I took a five-minute walk from her home around the neighborhood, and I don't have, I have on a separate index where these addresses are, and I could provide it a lot at later time. But these are existing homes in the area that don't have the quality of the pavers that she put in or, or the design that she put in. It's, some are pavers, some are concrete, some are asphalt, but all of them go right up to the property line on observation. You could see one, it's cracked concrete, and debris is, is being kept there. Another one is poured, poured concrete, and another one is poured asphalt. In this particular case, the applicant has pavers in sand that water will permeate through. The prior plants that she had in a planter box, i- if you'll see from, from the planning department, it, it bordered the property line, and over the rainy season, everything would spill out and be mud, and the trees weren't kept up. So the trees were removed. There's a small, I don't want to call it a retaining wall. I don't, I don't think it's, it's structurally a retaining wall, but it is retaining soil from the neighbors on the left-hand side of the picture. That's been there since the house has been there. That was never added, that's not new. That's there. And the pavers were taken up to that point to create less of a problem with the landscape and the mud going onto her property, and it was taken clear out. And if you see the pictures in the neighborhood from a five-minute walk, everybody has this. Some are old, some are new. I'll take any questions that.
Well, the last one's on Via Pariso, not on Mar Vista. I mean, Via Del Ray. Not on Mar Vista, the last one.
That's the one with the prayer flags in the background.
The one with the car in the dumpster is one of my neighbors is right around the corner, Via Del Ray.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Well, why don't we bring it back to the commission?
Taking, we still had to take public comment.
Oh.
And before we move on to that, I was just gonna note that I just looked in the code and for R1 properties, the set front yard setback, there's a footnote in the setback. So the minimum front yard setback for any garage, carport or parking pad is 20 feet from the park, from the property line. So rather than that 15 foot measurement we were discussing, it would be 20 feet for a parking or driveway or anything associated with that. Now we can move forward with public comment.
Is there anybody in chambers that would like to make a comment? Please come up.
My name is Lisa Sterrett. We've been trying, I know where it came from. We're across the street from Desiree and we've been trying for over two years to get a permit for an unusable driveway. No variances have been allowed. The occupant is handicapped. He's been told he can't park up in his front yard. His front yard is, it's hops. You can't use the driveway. So the only thing I'm here to say is if she gets a variance for a usable driveway, we want a variance for an unusable driveway so that it can be accessible for him. Cause I have paperwork here, which Christie knows me, I've been in and out. I have drawings. We've had architects, engineers, everybody else out there. And it just doesn't seem right that her driveway is usable before. And she's allowed a variance, but we were not. And I can't tell you how much money we've paid for architects. We've had five different drawings that we presented. And we've been told we can't use pavers because it's not acceptable. So there needs to be some conformity and some fairness. Either it's allowed or it's not. He has a back problem. He's had six major back surgeries. He cannot get groceries up and down. He had a city inspector come and tell him he can't park his truck up on the, up on the front yard. I said, well, then you come and carry his groceries up. He can't get up and down that hill with those groceries. He said, well, I can't do that. I said, well, he can't either. So I, I don't know how you're gonna resolve it, but that's how, where we stand. The other property owner that's there with, that joint owner is his sister. She feels the same way. She said she needs to get that property accessible for her brother. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else in chambers have a comment? Spencer, anybody online?
There are no attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, then let's pull it back for discussion. Terry, you want to start it off?
Sure. I'm, I'm sorry to see an applicant, you know, having to use the sort of expensive route of using an attorney for this case. Cause it's, in my experience, variances are all about the findings with the three findings. And you have to meet all three findings to get a variance normally. And in this case, I do agree with staff that there's really no hardship. That first finding is always the hard one. About, you know, that there's some unique circumstance of the property. Usually it's a tree or a waterfall or topography or something like that. But I, I just don't see that first finding being met here. And, you know, it, it seems to me like it would be fairly easy to control the detritus and sort of dirt from getting out of the driveway with a, a, you know, edge. You know, they would have to remove part of the existing beautifully done driveway, but it's not really so much about the quality of the material as it is about its proximity to the property line. So I don't know. I, I tend to agree with staff on this one.
Andy?
Me as well. And to your comment, the whole point of the planning commission reviewing a variance application is to make sure that there isn't special privilege and there isn't, if there are special circumstances are not present. And there are no special privilege. I mean, th- then parity is what we're looking for fairness and parity. So I agree with the staff because I don't think that, is it two out of the three findings, right? Or is it all three have to be found, have to be met?
All three have to be.
Okay. So I agree with staff completely. Yeah.
Same here. I mean, these are always tough. I've always been a little conservative when it comes to variances before the planning commission. We've seen situations out in the neighborhood where this exists that doesn't get, exist. So when I look at these now, I always try to look at it from a point of view is how are we going to equal this out so that we're, this is being applied equally throughout the neighborhood. So I would be in support of staff's findings. I, I can't. I can't think of a circumstance where I can justify voting of what staff recommending.
Peter?
I'm in agreement. I'm, when I first reviewed the application for the variance request, I tried to think of any possible loophole in the zoning ordinance that could possibly work in their favor. I went into the section of definitions and I looked up the definition for landscape. And boy, sure enough, it's right there, clear as day that, you know, you cannot do any kind of pavers or crush stone or concrete up to the, up to the property line within three feet of the driveway. So that didn't work out. And I agree that staff did a, an analysis that I agree with. And with other members of the commission. Therefore I will be siding with the city on this one.
Mike?
When you look at Spanish architecture. And I've seen it in other countries as well as this country. And in the old part of Monterey where sidewalks and so forth approach directly to the property line. It allows to get people to get close to that property. As we go out into the city, we see instances like this. And I, I agree with what Peter just said. When we started looking at approaches to the house from the street. That transition is the area we're talking about. And I, I looked at all the examples that the gentleman just gave us. And they all look very nice. I've seen people in, even in my neighborhood do circular driveways. Or there's actually two entrances. And they kind of dress it up. They try to dress it up so it, it looks all good, but it generally it takes on this concept. I asked the question, I came a little early and I asked the question of down at the mouth of the valley by the post office that, that Rancho, Carmel Rancho Center, there's a business out there that has pavers, but there's grass growing amongst it. So that you get both the idea of foliage as well as something to park a car, not create a rut. Is the city looked at updating these, these, this section?
Not recently. We haven't, hasn't been recognized as a high priority for revision.
The reason I ask because I, I drive around the neighborhoods and I, I see more and more of this. And if you look at San Jose, you'll see entire front yards covered in cars. So we're cutting out parking. What are we doing to increase or to allow the people that live there a little bit more parking space? I tend to go with the city, with the ordinances, but I think that we need to reexamine this issue. It's not going to get easier. And if the same person that made this report goes around the whole neighborhood, I'm sure we're going to get more because there are more there because I, I drove the neighborhood today. I just hope that something can be accomplished. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And I, I think I agree with everybody. And I think the point that was made by the comment is one of the primary issues that we're, you know, trying to address here is fairness. I mean, we're gonna open it up with one, we have to open it up with everybody. And so that's a hard, high bar to, to look at in terms of the implications. And I think Mike might be right. It could be that we need to reassess this, but until that happens, I think we really have to support what staff has said. So I'll be voting to support staff. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks.
That the planning commission adopt a resolution to deny the variance application. And to, and to also require the special condition as recommended by staff.
Great.
Great. So we have a, a motion and a second.
Make just one comment.
Sure.
So for the neighbors, you know, I just wanted to make the observation that the, there are numerous regulations about driveways in the zoning ordinance. There's the width of them. There's the percentage of the front yard that you can cover. There's the three foot. This is the first time I've ever seen the three foot side setback actually come as a variance application. There are rules about steepness, you know, that's, that's just a general rule, not, not a specific driveway rule. But it's, it, it's hard to sort of compare apples to oranges with the zoning ordinance. Oh, well, you know, you're letting, or you're, you know, here's a three foot setback here. You should let this other one happen too. So it is a case by case basis. So this three foot side setback issue for driveway material. It sounds like it doesn't apply to this difficult situation across the street. So I just wanted to make that comment. And then I wanted to, to just state again that this requirement to remove the driveway in that three foot setback only is within 20 feet of the front property line. I, I, I believe that they can leave it there, you know, beyond that 20 feet as you access that gate. So that's all. Okay. And, and I would add as part of the motion that that be clarified as part of the special condition, what Terry just mentioned.
Understood. Thank you.
Spencer, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latazza?
Yes.
That motion carries and that is appealable to the planning commission within 10 days of forms available online in the planning office.
That'll be actually appealable to the city council.
The planning commission?
Yeah, city council.
Yeah. And you're just in the habit of being on ARC.
Appeal back to last.
So the commissioners have any comments to make in general?
Sure. You, you're going to announce the training and I was going to ask the people on the commission who would like to attend because I, I really believe that people need to come back and tell us. Like when we get threats from the state, if we don't follow their rules, what they're going to do to us. That's really need someone to hear that and report back.
Sure. And just before this meeting this afternoon, I sent the email out. So a lot of you probably were either already en route here. But it's for the planning commissioners academy. I believe that's what you're referring to. Yeah. So March 5th through the 7th, Santa Rosa, California, if you'll just let us, uh, planning staff know who wants to attend, we can definitely assist you with registration and getting your accommodations. But I forwarded the email to everyone on the commission. So has a lot more information there. If you're interested in looking at what the program contents are, who the speakers are, what the, uh, what's going to be covered, take a look at that. And then yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to planning staff.
So what are, what are you guys thoughts? Anybody considering it?
Considering it, not, not definite yet.
I, I'm going to be out of town, so I'm not going to be available. I won't be able to attend.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat, but I went last time and I do agree with Mike. It was really worth the, the time. It was an educational experience. And maybe next year, if we keep ahead of it, we could plan for our travel, our activities outside not to, you know, be, it's only like six weeks until, so it's not surprising that some of the members can't do it. But if we know earlier, maybe that would help.
I do have a couple of comments.
Great.
So I'm not going to be here for the February 11th or the 25th planning commission hearings. Do I need to send you a email?
Spencer will take note of it and we'll just put you down as not going to be present.
And then I, I still would like to harp on this fire situation. Cause I know the, I can't remember exactly how it works, but tree removal applications, which we occasionally see are usually on appeal from planning or from ARC. But I think usually the tree removal is really not part of our purview. It's, it's sort of either ARC or city council. Just because of the, the way the, the zoning ordinance is written. So I, if we are, I, I would still like to see an agendized review of tree removal and especially forest management issues. I'm just really concerned. I mean, I think there are probably a lot of homeowners in the city who would like to remove dangerous trees from that proximity to their homes that the current ordinance would not allow. And I, I don't know if that's really a safe attitude to have in lieu of sort of this worsening situation. It's not going to get better. And I think we have to, we're not the worst city. I mean, there's a lot worse cities in California than us as far as having chaparral, which is to me, the main culprit. Chaparral, eucalyptus, of course, are wonderful pines. So anyways, I'm looking forward to some time where we could review that.
Sure. And I'll just note, the city is planning a more citywide, more extensive educational opportunity for fire management, defensible space and how that plays into the regulations that the city has in the building code. So they're still putting that together as soon as we get more, when I get more information on exact dates and what's going to be covered, I'll definitely share it with this group. But it'll also probably be heavily publicized to the rest of the city. So you'll probably hear about it through other channels, but I'll make sure to forward it along to this group as well. So it can be further distributed.
It looks like they're doing a lot of work up at Huckleberry Hill. So I think whoever's in public works, who does all that?
Yeah. So in coordination with our parks department, so we do have the green, green bill management project. So there's fuel reduction that's happening throughout as a part of that project. So it's definitely something that's been considered in our forested areas, but as you mentioned, it's being talked about a lot, a lot more right now.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
I just have one comment. I think, I want to respond to Nina Beatty. You know, we have such poor management of the power lines that go in between the trees. And then when we have a storm, the power goes out. So people are investing in generators and they're investing in battery backup. And this idea of having batteries in the garage is not new, but it's getting more prevalent. I think she raises an important point that maybe the city would look at, what are the maximums? What are the minimums? What, are there any regulations for battery backups? Tesla is doing a fine job of selling them. But anyway, it's a new issue. So.
And just to add on to that, we ended up getting Tesla parallels with our solar. And Lori was very aggressive in terms of safety when we were going through the building permit process. And we ended up needing to move the batteries away from the house. So I think, I think. So I think, I think our building staff is looking into that from, from my experience.
Lori Lynn Williamson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a complicated topic. There are different types of batteries. Some pose greater risks than others. And so when you look at installing a system and, well, like for us, a client's home or something like that, there's a lot to consider there.
Yeah, we had scutter work our paperwork, but Lori ended up working with them to come up with what she thought was going to be a much safer outcome. So it was um, um, interesting process to see. And I'm glad that we went through it and that the city is being very cautious, I think, from my perspective on trying to mitigate that. On the um, the fire standpoint, I'm hoping that we're going to try to look at um, and how insurance plays into this too. And so, you know, I know up on Skyline and um, in the forested area on the hill, it's going to be more and more of an issue. And so hopefully however city is going to address um, tree removal and um, it's going to cover everything that might be associated with what the insurance companies might drive us to keep our policies um, in those type of areas. Peter?
Um, question for actually both Christie and Levi is w- w- what is the status of the L C P update?
Sure. So yes, we are working diligently on preparing uh, trying to finalize our, our first chapter for submission to the coastal commissions for, for their staff review. Uh, we are uh, working um, with uh, Rencon on uh, the completion of the remaining draft L C P. And to get that submitted to coastal commission review as well. So it's uh, it's being worked on. We hope to have something of substance submitted to uh, coastal commission staff for that first kind of preliminary uh, round of comments from them. And then obviously we'll be moving into uh, uh, re-engaging the public. It's been a little bit of time since we've uh, had that initial public engagement um, process for the L C P. So kind of want to revisit that uh, and kind of uh, and, and show, show what's been uh, prepared up to now. And then um, so that'll be in the upcoming months as well.
Is there like a, any more of a definitive timeline as to what the final um, approval might be?
Certainly want to get a, our goal is to have an adopted and certified L C P in this calendar year. Obviously, once it gets to the coastal commission level, it gets a little bit out of our hands as far as uh, review timeframe and, and when we can get on a coastal commission hearing. And, and those policy discussions and getting on the same page as far as what agreeable policies are with our community and what the coastal commission is going to be looking for as well. Uh, but we are still very optimistic that that's something achievable in this year.
Okay. I just know that from experience that C D Ps usually take eight months just to get on the calendar.
Yeah. The, we're fortunate that the coastal commission is also uh, eager for us to have a uh, L C P as well. So I think that um, they, they do have legally allowed review timeframes that I'm sure they'll take full advantage of. Uh, and giving themselves as much time as they're legally allowed to. Uh, but I do know that they're also uh, they're, they have a interest in us getting an L C P certified and adopted as well.
Good. Thank you, Levi.
Of course.
Mike? Oh, Levi, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, just real quick, as noted in the staff report, um, follow up from the January 22nd city council meeting, um, just uh, kind of on the community development radar, they did receive the rental inventory program annual report. Uh, staff did present some uh, potential recommended changes, but uh, those were discussed, but council didn't, didn't take any of those on at this point in time. So they just received the report and uh, the program will continue as it is structured currently. Uh, and along that same band, they also received the rental assistance program update. Uh, and the staff's recommended changes. So they received that report as well and did uh, accept the recommended changes from staff to the rental assistance program. Um, so those are obviously two initiatives spearheaded by the community development department's housing division. So just wanted to provide a quick update on where those things have been with council. Uh, beyond that, we just have on our tentative agenda for February 11th, um, we are looking, staff is going to be bringing forward a uh, zoning amendment uh, to allow bike uh, rental and bike equipment rental um, and the C two and C R zoning districts. So kind of expanding what's already allowed in some of our specific plan areas into the rest of the city for bike rental.
Speaking of which, I believe what, a month or two ago, we had an application regarding uh, electric bikes and the hazards they cause on the rec trail. Does anybody recall?
There, there was a discussion about um, amongst the commissioners, I think during commissioner comments about
That's right.
bike, rec trail and the use of electric bikes.
And I, I, my recollection is a little hazy now, but was there a um, any kind of uh, movement afoot to, to revisit this on the city level or agendize it?
So not currently. I want to do coordinate better with our public works department. I will note that our bike rental definition does have specifications as far as what qualifies under bike rental and the what class of electric bike is included in that definition. So that's already an existing definition in the uh, zoning code. So uh, which will obviously get into that in more detail at the February 11th meeting, um, when we're considering this, but um, so I think that specificity does kind of provide some assurance, but it obviously as far as enforcement goes, that's another conversation to be had. Yeah.
Yeah, I think Terry had brought that up, but we had discussed it. Is, is it something that falls into the purview of the planning commission or is that just solely a city council issue?
Uh, primarily a city council issue if it's uh, would be an ordinance that's brought forth to, to more uh, strictly regulate um, activity on the recreation trail. Um, if it has to do with, and you know, anything in chapter 38 or zoning code uh, is within the purview of the planning commission to some degree. So that's why things like permitted uses of bike rental will be coming before the commission.
I, I was just interested in agendizing it so it, we could bring it to light. Cause I know P G has quite restrictive rules and then you cross the line into Monterey and they aren't there anymore. So we uh, it would be wise of us to, to coordinate a little better on that.
Yeah. And I think as uh, Director Cole uh, pointed out at the last meeting, I think to get something like that agendized in more formal fashion would be uh, kind of uh, the channel will come through council. So if a member of the planning commission wanted to uh, you know, speak at the council meeting during public comment, they can obviously make the, make that um, express those desires.
Oh, so we aren't likely to see it on our agenda anytime.
Not as a formal action item now. If anything, it would be come forward as an informational item, just as to receive a report or some informational update from staff on, on what the actual uh, current regulations are.
So that's why that guy who wrote the letter and had done all that research, he presented it to the city council. And then it just so happened that there was a business, and this is just before you came. There was a business that wanted to open up a new bicycle rental shop. Um, I think over there where the new community police station is near Alastero Lake. And that began this discussion of what level of bike is allowed on the rec trail and what are the parameters? What are the borderlines? And he had presented the same letter to the city council. It was so informative. I mean, he had done so much research on this. Hope he comes back.
Um, just to um, remind everybody, there's also a special meeting, city council tomorrow. And I think it's going to um, be about more future plans that the city is going to be prioritizing. Is that right, Levi?
Um, not aware of a special meeting.
The work plan?
The workshop.
Staff work plan?
Let me take a look.
See, I think they've extended it out.
Yeah, council special meeting, January 29th, four to seven. That uh, can't read it without my glasses.
Oh, yes. It's the workshop for the staff work program and to establish and adopt city council priorities. And that meeting, yes. Will be Wednesday, January 29th, starting at four o'clock.
That might be worth um, watching or attending if anybody's free. But um, having said that, um, we'll close this meeting to 4:55. Thank you, everybody.
Good job.
Thank you, Bob.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Ah.